Okay, we're ready. I'm just scrolling through. Nine o'clock meetings are are hard when you have to deal with the highway early. And that was so much fun. I hope everybody had a good weekend and got to watch lots of basketball prep for the upcoming weekend. I want to thank you all. Are my subcommittee chairs here, ma'am?
Yes, they are.
Oh, good. Did not see them.
Good morning.
We wouldn't miss it.
Good morning, good morning. Let's see now. Representative Gilchrist, she on?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Senator, good morning, and Senator, Senator.
Senator Lester is on.
Lester, how are you? Good to see you. Okay. All right, we got DCF front and center.
Good morning, Representative Walker. Good morning, Senator Austin, and good morning, Senator Berto, and Representative Nucio, and to the members of the Distinguished Appropriations Committee, DCF is here and accounted for first thing Monday morning. I have various subject matter experts in the room with me as well as on the link. That's one of the benefits of having this virtually. I can have the people who can speak directly to the questions that we have. So we've prepared responses to the questions from our budget presentation, and if without further ado, we can just jump in. How would you like us to proceed?
Representative Gilchrist, Senator Lester, how would you like to proceed?
I think going through the answers would be fantastic to start.
So question number one compared DCF's projected account lapses to the current services adjustments made to five accounts based on expenditure trends. So Melanie, did you want us to walk through question number one?
I'll mute.
Yes.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. So question number one was regarding our current FY23 projected lapses of which five of our accounts are projecting lapses due to our caseload trends, children in placement caseload trends. We are projecting a lapse in our personal services budget, and we are projecting a deficit in our other expense budget. In the caseload-driven accounts, those lapses are largely driven by the downward trend in children coming into placement. You can see we've realized a 25% reduction of kids coming into care since 2018. That is spelled out more completely in question two. And then specifically between FY21 and FY22, a more than 15% reduction of kids coming into care. Those five accounts near the bottom, those last five accounts, those are all driven by the number of kids in care and the needs that those kids have when they come in care. So when our children in placement accounts are trending downwards, when our children in placement numbers are trending downwards, our accounts trend downwards. Our PS projected lapse, that is projected to right-size itself in the next fiscal year. That is due to the large number of vacancies that we have realized in FY23 due to the July 1st retirements of quite a few DCF staff.
Can I, can I ask a question, Madam Chair? Or Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Thanks. Okay, so you said that the reason why you had the lapses was because of downward trends since 2018. Is that correct?
So we were asked in question two to identify our caseload trends for the last five years. So if you look between 2018 and now, we've seen a 25% reduction. In the last fiscal year, '21 to '22, ending in '22, we saw a 15% reduction. We're projecting another reduction between '22 and '24.
Have you changed anything in the way you accept caseloads? Has the prerequisites that you have established for putting people in care under those categories, have those changed?
No, Representative, I can answer that question. We haven't changed. But I would be remiss if I didn't say that in 2019, when I became appointed to this position, we took a really hard look at, you know, the children that we had in care and the front door, and recognizing that children are best served when they can safely remain at home, and invested quite a bit in our community-based in-home services, as you all have allocated over the years. And so with an emphasis on children remaining safely at home, and then if they can't remain home with their relatives, I think we've seen the downward trend calibrate children in placement to the place, to where it is today. I will say, on the other end of the pandemic, we are cautiously optimistic that we can help families rebound, but recognize the concern of the complexities that they face. So if that trend doesn't continue downward, it's likely as a result of, you know, kind of families trying to feel their way on the other side of the pandemic.
Can you tell us how many beds does this shut down in actual access for the families? Since you have this reduction, what are the numbers telling us? The number of beds that are going to be closed out, like PRTS, et cetera?
To make the correlation between beds?
What I'm asking is, these reductions that you have in front of us, does that reduce the number, because it's under boarding care? You've got boarding care, adoption, foster, and short-term residential, and individual family support. Those represent beds in access for families when they need them for adoption or foster care for the children. So therefore, with these reductions, how many beds does this shut? How many beds are you closing down in the state because of these reductions?
So I think I understand what the question is. Our, the therapeutic group home beds that we have are for children that are in in care, so they're not open to the general public. And so we typically calibrate our group home sense, our group home availability based on the census of their utilization. So it's not that there is a reduction in group home beds as a result of a reduction in children in placement. It's a reduction in the utilization of said beds.
Okay, let me try it again. In the statement, it says board. Board is bed. So if you are reducing boarding care for adoption, boarding care for children, foster care, and boarding care for short-term and residential, that, those are besides care, and there's boarding. They are being placed in these homes. So what are the beds that are reflected in the numbers that you have in reduction? You closed down.
So you've bed.
Facilities. Wait, you closed down facilities. How many beds in your facilities have you closed down?
Beds are, beds are covered under only one boarding care account, so 16138 Boarding Care Residential. Those are our congregate, those are bedded programs. Boarding Care Foster is our foster parent stipends, so it's placement stipends, and then it's all the services for those kids that they need. If you're talking beds only, that is that, the one account, it's short-term and residential boarding care. And for therapeutic group homes, I believe that last fiscal year, it was roughly 100 beds that were taken offline. I can get you that exact number, but I believe it was roughly 100, and those were group home, therapeutic group home beds.
So that the eleven and a half million dollars on boarding care is equivalent, is a reduction of 100 beds? And is that, is that what you're telling me? That's what I'm trying to find out.
It's, it's the, it's the equivalent of those beds plus all of the care associated with those kids. So it's not just the cost of the program, it's also the cost of if that child needs transportation, if that child needs after-school services, it's all of the services associated with those kids as well.
I, I, maybe I'm not saying this question right. But these, the reductions that you have here under, okay, I'll just say 16138 equivalent, there are beds involved in that. And you're saying the foster care and the adoption does not have beds, so it only is 16138. And you're saying that it's 100 beds that are reflected in 11 and a half million dollars. Is that correct? That's all I'm trying to figure out.
Roughly, rough, yes, roughly 100 beds. I can give you the exact count. We can send that to you, but yes, it is roughly 100 beds.
Can I, can I jump in there, Tony? I just, I want to kind of understand too. So in this case, are you saying that we reduce these beds because we're not using them, because less kids are in foster care? Like we're keeping kids and families, so these are, these are lapses that you've had over more than one year, I would suppose, that we're just, we have a facility, but we're not using it, kind of a thing. Now, I guess the, the next important question is, say, unfortunately, which I hope it does not ever happen, but unfortunately, there's an uptick in kids, and you need this, how hard would it be to reestablish these beds if needed? And how many beds does this leave? That's the other question. How many beds, after you close this 100, how many beds do we still have available?
What's our group home census? I will have them get the group home census as we speak, but it's a, it's a fair question related to our provider's ability to pivot with us. And so what you see is that we would only go towards group homes that were kind of 60% underutilized over the period of time that you have just outlined. And so when we work with our provider community and really trying to either shift their business plan or business model to what we do have. So for instance, one of the things that we have done with some of the therapeutic group homes is shift to what we're calling a quality parenting, quality parenting centers, which instead of having children do supervised visits with their parents in a state building or in a DCF office, they will go to one of these community-based homes that our provider, that our providers have retrofitted to now, instead of being a therapeutic group home, have shifts of visits that happen in a more home-like and normative setting. And we've saw, we've seen tremendous success happening in those. So there are about nine of those across the state that are the same physical space, but they do something different in them. So we've seen quite a bit of benefit from that. So if we had to shift back, I would imagine that that would be the case.
So you could pivot. Like if all of a sudden we had a surge, and God, like I said, I hope we don't, that we have to have a bunch of children placed into foster care. You still have the facilities to be able to house if necessary. This is just a reduction in the expense because you historically aren't using it, because we're not putting as many kids in congregate foster care.
Mm-hmm, that's fair, yes.
Which is good, I guess, right?
It is, it is. And I, you know, even with caseload trends, if they start to trend up, as I've indicated in terms of the other end of the pandemic, you know, you're not going to see it shift so quickly that we would be caught flat-footed. I do believe that our system can adjust to the needs of kids and families.
There's also a nuance here to your question, Rep, around our strictly contract-funded programs and our fee-for-service programs. Our contract-funded programs are those that we referenced earlier, that we have reduced beds in our therapeutic group homes. Our fee-for-service programs accept DCF referrals, they accept straight community referrals, and they also, so they're not strictly DCF, which also gives us additional flexibility, because they're taking alternative funding sources, not just ours. So if we did have the need to pivot and stand up utilization higher than where, what we're currently seeing, our RTCs, that's what we call them, our residential treatment centers, they're fee-for-service, and we have placement options there.
Commissioner, just to follow up on this conversation, are you all discussing with other states, is this like part of the trend of underreporting during the pandemic because kids weren't in school? Like, are we seeing kind of the tail end of that? And again, I'm with Representative Nucio and not wanting this to go up, but you know, do you think this is related still to the pandemic?
Yeah, no, we're very much in contact with our, with other jurisdictions across the country, and I'm really happy to report that oftentimes, just last week, I had four jurisdictions calling Connecticut to hear what's our secret sauce, like what's happening there? How are things able to be sustained over a period of time? Because we have, you know, lots of areas of best practice that other jurisdictions would like to borrow from. I would say that the jury is still out on the impact of the pandemic. You know, I don't know what will be the ultimate result, but I caution us on the reporting aspect of things, because that is something we are constantly in contact with our education partners on. As our largest bank of mandated reporters, are there other things that schools need in order to be able to help families when they're in need, rather than the Child Protective Service Agency, if there's not a suspicion of maltreatment, and it's just a family who may need some additional assistance? So I do think it gave us an opportunity to change the conversation of not report for report's sake, but reports for, you know, the right services for families if they're in need.
Great, thank you.
I certainly see that being reflected in our prevention continuum and based, you know, kind of putting a lot of emphasis on, you know, what people need within communities, within families to remain together. You know, and then of course, if a child has to be removed, we have criteria for that as well.
So Commissioner, I'm not saying that we need to keep these open, but I'm trying to understand what the circulation is. So you're saying that you took off 100 beds off, and you opened up quality parenting centers? How many quality parenting centers do we have in existence?
Nine. Nine?
Nine. Okay, and you're using those in place for rest of care also?
No.
No?
No.
So, so the 100 beds were not rest of care, they were strictly for adoption and, I'm, I'm trying to understand, where did you reduce? In what areas did you reduce?
So the physical spaces that the quality parenting centers are in, are in the former therapeutic group homes. So one of the things, if you recall, from the last budget, we allowed for the transition of just the people who had physical buildings and therapeutic group homes to convert to quality parenting centers. And so some of the original RFPs for those were only for therapeutic group home providers, because they had, they had group homes that were sitting empty, because the referrals weren't coming in, because we were reducing children in care. So they, they are typically the owners of these TPCs, 2PCs.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other questions, so please feel free to continue.
Thank you. Question number two, asked about the budgeted amount expended in each of the three boarding care accounts over the past fiscal year, so we can kind of go further into these line items to give a more well-rounded picture of what the impact of the percentage of our caseload changes are having over the last five years. You want to go a little bit further?
So if you look at, if you look at this slide from 2018 all the way to 2022, you'll see our appropriation, actual, what we actually lapsed. In this case, I'm going to say lapsed, because we didn't go into deficit in any of these accounts for these five years. And then you'll also see our caseloads. So at the end, the percentages that you're looking at are caseload comparisons, they're not dollar comparisons. So you can see overarching, for the last five years, we have been trending downward in the caseloads for both foster and congregate residential.
All right, I don't see any questions. Can we continue?
If I might, I'm sorry, I couldn't find that raise hand thing here, but this is Rep. Polinsky. Our, the caseload. The caseload reduction is obvious, but it, but it appears as if our costs continue to escalate. The reason for that is our current labor agreements is, or have we changed our approach to staffing?
So the reason for that is actually directly linked to the reduction of kids coming into care. What that means is that the kids that are coming into care now have a much higher acuity rate. Their needs are an awful lot higher than what we've traditionally seen. So when you combine the higher needs with obviously inflation and rising costs, and the fact that most of these programs that we fund out of these two accounts are fee-for-service driven, which means that the providers can change their fee structure frequently. That's why you're seeing rising costs with a declining caseload population.
Got it. So there's, when it comes, when it comes to those changing costs, is, is there a collaborative effort with DCF and those providers? Or is this just a cost that is levied? And unless it's obviously out of line, we just abide?
We, so a lot of these are one-off, we call them one-offs. So it's not a contracted service that we're paying for, it's a child that comes in and we need a, we need something from them, for them. So the social worker will go out, they'll procure the service. That service estimate, there's a quote that we received, that comes into the fiscal team, and the fiscal team reviews it for viability, and we're looking for things like, like type. We're looking for screening for average cost, if, you know, we went out and tried to procure this ourselves. So there is absolutely a review that's, that we conduct when we're putting services into place as far as cost. And the costs that we're paying are not out of line with what I would pay if I was going to procure a service for my child independently.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Back to you, Madam Chair.
Great, I see Representative Johnson has her hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just a question in terms of the causations. Has the cause of these, you know, placements changed since 2018? As we look at the decrease, I was wondering in terms of income availability, housing situations, have there been changes in those circumstances that have created that, the more concentration of situations where there's a higher acuity, say, in 2020 than there is in 2018?
I would say yes, and I would say that that's also reflective in children's behavioral health. When we think of the impact to children and their families post-pandemic, I think you're right, it's the basic needs plus the complex needs from a children's behavioral health kind of focus, and their parents' behavioral health, you know, whether it's substance use or other needs within a family. I think all of those kind of converging as a result of the pandemic, or whether they were exacerbated by the pandemic. The families that we are working with tend to have a multitude of issues that result in, you know, higher expenditures, particularly if children have to come into care. So I would say it's a both end.
Yeah, thank you for that. And also, on the other, on the other hand, when you look at the actual reductions, then there have been your work in terms of making a determination to work with the families. Do they have more resources during the pandemic to be able to work with, and they might have not had before the pandemic?
I would say yes and no, because you know that there were lots of pivots, and I think some of that may be answered in the ARPA response, because some of what those, those needs that became glaringly apparent during the pandemic, we tried to be very thoughtful in our response in the appropriations from the federal government that were temporary to determine whether or not we could kind of help through the unpredictability of the pandemic. I think, I think that's fair.
Okay, thank you so much for those answers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, go right ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Question number three, what we were asked, which services under the six accounts might be reduced or eliminated under the funding adjustment for direct service contract trends? And which nonprofits, which municipalities might be impacted by these service reductions or eliminations? And then there was a sub-question also of which nonprofits and which municipalities might be impacted by the service reductions or eliminations more specifically. So Melanie, do you want to respond to it?
For, so when we were looking at proposed reductions, we looked at our entire service area. We have roughly 80 service types around the state. Those 80 service types encompass 330 individual programs. What we looked at with our service types was utilization, but it wasn't just utilization. We wanted to be mindful of the national staffing crisis and where our utilization might have been negatively impacted, because our providers have been, while actively trying to get staff in, just like many of us have been somewhat unsuccessful in that. So we didn't want to arbitrarily reduce our services if wait lists or if service utilization was being impacted, because we didn't have staffing. So we looked at both utilization in FY22, and we looked at cases where service was reduced, kids were turned away because either service was at capacity, or because our providers were impacted by staffing issues. We took out any of the services that were impacted because of staffing issues. We didn't even consider those for a proposed reduction. That, that analysis will come down the road once the staffing crisis has resolved itself. So what you see before you are the service types that had low utilization, and that utilization was not impacted by staffing issues at the provider level during the year. We kept a buffer. You can see in these proposed reductions, we kept a buffer in case the need for those services goes up in the next year. We did not propose direct elimination of most of these services. We just proposed a reduction that's commensurate with the utilization that we're seeing, and utilization is tied to the need.
Okay, so just, thank you. This is really helpful, but just to be clear, as I'm, so what you have listed here aren't reductions based on the nonprofit not having the staff. These are, like, these are, would be like fully staffed or ready to go, and there still just wasn't the utilization?
Or staffing vacancies, but we didn't have the need to refer to the service.
Got it.
And.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands, so feel free to continue on.
Question number four asked us to provide the information on how unbudgeted other expenses costs approximately of $2 million in FY23 will be addressed in '24, '25 with inflation funding in both fiscal years. This was an increase of less than 0.4 of the fiscal year '23 available funding.
So much of our, most of our deficit, our projected deficit in OE is tied to IT costs. IT, just like many of our other industries, has been hit with a staffing shortage, a staffing crisis, and quite a bit of inflation in IT costs. So we have been mitigating some of our needs through hiring of consultants. And those consultants come out of the other expense line as opposed to a staff hire, which comes out of the PS line. The same is, the same is true of the software license. I think that with some of the centralization of bits, some of these, some of the costs that agencies have traditionally borne 100% are going to be able to be spread across some of the agencies. So in consultation with OPM, we're anticipating that some of our OE expenses are going to be significantly reduced next year.
Ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes, go right ahead.
So do you, so have all of your IT people been transferred over to DAS? Are you still retaining some in DCF?
Yes, ma'am, they've all been transferred over to DAS. They've been centralized. We do retain a small team of mostly DCF staff titles, but working on the development and implementation of CT Kind, which is our link replacement system, our CWS compliance system.
Okay, so you have a unique IT system that is strictly.
It's our client use management documentation system.
And that can't be worked into the global DAS IT? And that can't be worked into the 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 global DAS IT. How many staff you have in that?
In CT Kind.
CT Kind? It's called CT Kind?
Yeah, yes.
I'd say i- it's less than ten, Representative. And I believe that most of, all of them. All of them have these, are DCF sta- like DCF staff titles. So they're not IT titles, um they are DCF staff titles because they're working on um. The specifics of how do we have a client management system and we need the DCF expertise for that.
Thank you.
Yep, I don't see any other hands, so please feel free to continue on.
Okay, question number five um was related to our ARPA-funded projects. Um and what we were authorized in twenty-two, twenty-three during the biennial budget, indicating that these projects are currently being implemented. Partially implemented or um not have not been implemented to date. Um most of our behavioral, most of our ARPA-related expenditures were related to um. Enhanced attention to children's behavioral health and many of the service types um were um. Brand new. So the standing up and implementation of them has taken longer than some that we just expanded. So we'll step through really quickly, um and then you'll see in the chart um where they are in terms of implementation. We know that we were a bridge for Family First to, because that particular uh service type was looking to. Um discover funding elsewhere as OEC reprocured that particular service type. Um we know that there had, there was a need for intensive care management for children uh who were in emergency departments. Who needed to be transitioned one way or another. We've been talking about and offer um in another question, more detail related to the expansion. Of emergency mobile psychiatric crisis services for kids to expand to statewide coverage in a twenty-four seven. Um availability. Uh we've also stood up what's called an urban trauma initiative, which recognizes. The needs of children in some of our urban settings um across the state to have clinicians there. That understand what that um traumatic experience could be like um as they are receiving clinical interventions. We um have also are in the uh we are in the almost finished um implementing a racial justice provider institute. So that many of the best practices that we as a jurisdiction are touted for across the country can be shared with. Our provider network to increase their abilities beyond um language uh competencies. We also have um the urgent crisis centers. Uh so here are the ones that. Um I think are taking a bit longer because they required um the reprocurement with our provider agencies. That um were um looking to stand up these brand-new service types. So urgent, urgent crisis centers. And subacute crisis stabilizations I will talk about together. So under the urban cr- urgent crisis centers. Um they are the twenty-three hour um centers to mitigate emergency department visits. Those are mostly implemented. Where we um are struggling a bit, and I use the word struggling very cautiously, is the subacute side. Because we did not have the provider interest in delivering that particular new service. So we had to do some solicitation. Um to directly to providers and that is um I would say in the partial implementation phase. And we can talk about that if if uh members are interested in hearing more detail on that. Uh you will see the uh social determinants of health, family assistance grants and access mental health. Um expansion also um outlined there. If you recall, those were, those were the funds that were available for families if their insurance. Didn't pick up. Um and then if you scroll down. Thank you. Um. Peer-to-peer, we implemented a resource guide that's available for families and we are um. In the process of making sure that there's widespread dissemination of that electronically and. In places where families can access to know where to get um a specific service. Uh we are, let me see, any others that might warrant? If you look at the the several lines in the bottom, many of those were um came to us. Through specific allocations for community-based services. Um and what you see is whether or not that particular provider has had um has responded in terms of. The allocated funds that were um set aside for them. Um so I think I'll stop there because that's, you know, this this chart kind of speaks for itself if there are any questions specific to our ARPA allocations.
Rip Walker followed by Rip Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. What do you mean by fully implemented? Does that mean, are you annualizing these costs? Into your budget or are 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 these? Uh they no longer need to be funded because once it's implemented, it's done?
So um I think, so there's a a couple of different responses to fully implemented. Some of the um expansions. Were um as an opportunity to train up or scale up our existing providers. So in the Urban Trauma Network, for example. That particular ARPA allocation was intended to be able to take existing providers and provide a specific model. And do learning forums with them, with the partic- with the doctor who is well-versed in that particular model. It was never intended to be forever, but we're still looking to determine whether or not it would need additional injections. We were also very thoughtful in um which uh uh. ARPA allocation, AR- ARPA suggestions that we put forward because we wanted things that could either be picked up by Medicaid. Or that we could uh make a case for continuing in our budget. So fully implemented just means that we were able to. Um it's stand up whatever that service type was and they are accepting patients or accepting clients. And then we are evaluating to determine how much longer we will um need to be able to find funding for that. So from the funding standpoint, you can a- answer the second part of the question.
Sure. From the funding standpoint, um all of this money is ARPA money, obviously. It is um, so it's federal money. Uh it is being uh operated, administered as a federal grant, uh which means that as it is expended. Uh it goes away. Uh so like the Commissioner said, we did put an emphasis on sustainable. Uh ARPA initiatives where possible. Um but as the, as the funding is expended. Um it it ceases to exist.
Roll down, Ben.
Go back up to the.
To the other page, okay.
So I see like um, for example, child first and you have fully implemented. What was was that process that you, and and is that annualized in your, in your cost right now?
No, if you recall, child first, we already had um uh slots of that particular service type. Then OEC reprocured that particular service type and I believe the ten million um at the time was to. Allow for the bridge for that provider to seek funding elsewhere. So we have not included that in our budget allocation. So the fully implemented means that we um. It was funded through the bridge um to this point.
And rep the nuance there is that um the money, the ARPA money, we have until June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. To expend that money. Uh so as we, as we implement it into contract, that's the fully implemented part. It is in contract and operational providers are providing services. We're monitoring those budgets. So when one of the child's first providers at the end of this fiscal year gives us a final expense report. That says that they um for whatever reason, mostly staffing vacancies uh had, you know. A hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars that they didn't expend. That money is rolling over to keep those services operational for as far into the next fiscal year as possible.
Okay, so um like I say, Urban Trauma Initiative. And it says that it's fully implemented. So you have now eight programs in Connecticut in.
Yeah.
For and they are still in existence.
Yes.
And they're operating. So you have incorporated them into your budget.
Yeah, that one was a very unique way of not just finding um the urban trauma model and in funding that. What we did was we took the provider who was well-versed in it and solicited existing clinicians that are already, you know, in agencies. And gave them the learning collaborative from, so it was a kind of train-the-trainer model. So it's clinicians that were already there that were introduced to and kind of injected with. Um further learning and competency in this particular model. So it's, you know, it's, so the fully implemented is, that's. It's, it's there already.
So Urban Trauma is a sustainable initiative. But Rip Walker, you, you asked, it has it been incorporated into our budget? That two million dollars, once it is spent. Is not incorporated into our budget.
Okay.
The learning collaborative that has to happen beyond that, we'd have to reevaluate, yeah.
Now, the other one is the, the crisis stabilization. So the crisis stabilization is create short-term. Um um uh congregant programming, et cetera. So, so is this. The other side of the eleven and point five million that you cut out of room and board? Is this taking up that space that was created with those hundred beds?
I think that's, I, I think that's a fair question. What we looked at and what you all in the legislature helped us look at last session. Was the full continuum of behavioral health services from the lightest touch to the deepest end. And you know, where we had to fill in some of the gaps. So whether or not that's reflected on, this is where I think some of the confusion comes in. In our therapeutic group homes, which are typically only for DCF-involved kids. On this side of the um of our equation, we look at beds available in the behavioral health continuum. As being able to really try to fill some of those gaps. And so the subacute um model is one that we're struggling to stand up. Just because of um provider interest in delivering that level of care.
So are these newly committed kids, newly committed kids? Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Are they newly committed kids? Something.
No, these could be kids that are at home with their families. That, you know, if they're having a behavioral health crisis, um that is a level of care that a family could access without being committed. To DCF or on the juvenile justice side, just experiencing a behavioral health crisis.
Thank you.
Mm-huh.
I have more questions, but I, I will do it online.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Rip Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just following up a little bit on the um, the idea of the social determinants and the um. And the uh provision of mental health services to children. Uh where the social determinants are uh an issue. Could you just explain that a little bit more? So we fully understand what the social determinants you're speaking of with respect to mental health services.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm hearing from my folks that this was the grant program that in the bill itself, it actually listed which social determinants of health. That it was um allowing for some additional funding for families to access if they, they needed it. From one of the things that we learned during the behavioral health crisis is that families were struggling to find um services that their. Uh insurance would pay for. And so um there were a couple of different bills that spoke to um funds that would be available to families. You know, and once those funds expand, then they're no longer available. But they were responding to the increased needs of uh children behavioral health. Uh payments for parents act, trying to access services for their kids.
And what will happen now that we're, you know, through the ARPA funds, will we still be able to continue some of those um services?
Yeah, until those funds run out. So um we have um put them with our uh administrative service organization. To be able to allocate those expenses so we could keep an eye on where they are in terms of um. Uh that when they're all done.
Uh-huh. And but I, I'm wondering where we're, where we're gonna be once those resources are no longer available.
I think there's um equal work being done on the children's behavioral health side in terms of value-based payments and. Um understanding the Medicaid and commercial parity in behavioral health um that should hopefully um fill some of those gaps. I think this was in response to what wasn't, at the same time as some of the costs associated with children's behavioral health are brought up to, to speed. With um uh physical health. Any more on that, Michael? I have um a more in-depth response.
Yeah, Roy, I'm sorry. Good, good morning. I'm Michael Williams, the Deputy Commissioner of Operations. And what we plan to do as these funds are being utilized is study the impact that they're making to determine whether or not. They're really uh meeting the needs of children and families where mental health and behavioral health uh issues exist. Uh based on that uh study, then we'll be able to determine whether or not it needs to continue. Uh this is not a fund that we request. It's a fund that was created by others that uh was given to us to operationalize and. We think the most prudent thing to do is to determine whether or not such funds as these are actually impactful. Uh and if so, come back later to talk about sustainability.
Okay, thank you for that. And moving down to the next page, uh page seven, uh when you're talking about the uh homeless youth uh funds. Uh when you talk about support statewide scattered site transitional living program for young adults. Uh and that says you're fully implemented. And how is that um? Uh how are they in need of, I, I know in my own district, I have homeless youth, especially males. That were not accepted into the Holy Family Shelter for families after they were, say, thirteen or so. And I'm wondering, is that something that you're, you're addressing because some of the shelters can't uh have males that are older than thirteen?
I'd, I'd like to um call upon one of the subject matter experts that's on, um Kim Summer Rodriguez is our director of our homeless program. Program, housing programs, and she could probably expand upon a response to that one. Kim, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hi, good morning, everyone. At thirteen being underage is, is difficult for the.
Can you um introduce yourself to the, the committee first, please, and your title? Sorry.
I, I apologize. I'm sorry. I'm uh Kim Summer Rodriguez, I'm a program supervisor in the um transitional supports. Uh Services Division at DCF. And um. I was uh just sharing that the uh, the, the homeless system has a, has difficulty when, when youth are under. A certain age and their response to, to um, to any uh youth in particular. They're wanting to ensure that they're in a more family-like setting and that the shelters are often not a place where many young people. Want to be because of the fear of safety from older adults there and other things and other people and stories that they've heard. Um and particularly, so they tend to often look for another resource in the community. To try to en- ensure that that, that youth is placed safely unless there's uh, there, there's a need for them to come into care. If there's been any allegation of abuse or neglect, the care line would be called for that, for that young person. And there would be an, an investigation to determine if there were more uh appropriate setting, if, if one could not be found in the community. If it's more of a familiar uh type of conflict, many of uh young people are seeking out their own type of. Safety plan often and staying and utilizing friends and, and relatives in the community. And so supports through our, our homeless youth. Uh services can be provided to an individ- uh a young per- a youth uh resource. As far as uh maintaining them in, in that placement with them safely, if they needed uh additional supports for, for food. For furniture that they could uh possibly access through the um, through, through our, our work with the two-on-one system. And even mediation services, if that were a uh, a need for them to be unified, to return back to their family home setting. They can, can do that as well. Um then much of this is pretty much uh streamlined through uh a, a young person or someone advocating for a young person contacting two-on-one. And then based on the community, uh determine which would be the best setting. Some communities have more resources than others as far as um. They're being like transition uh transitional housing settings or group home type settings. The city, uh town of Manchester has one just for Manchester youth where a family can work on their. The, the issues that they may be having without the um involvement of the, of the department. And these are all, you know, supported through our work and collaboration with the Department of Housing and the, the um homeless youth. Uh demonstration grant that we have along with them.
So just going back to um that, that's, thank you for that explanation and that's, that's very, very good. I just uh, so there is a, say, for example, I give an example, a family that has um. Uh a mother and a child, uh two, say, two children. Uh one is uh female and under thirteen, one is a male and is around thirteen or fourteen years old. And so here we are now, they've been evicted or they have not been able to pay the rent because they don't have any resources. Because of a layoff and a job or whatever the circumstances are. And so now the uh, that, that family has been. And so now the uh that that family has been accepted, the the two females have been accepted into the Holy Family Shelter. But the male has not because they don't accept males over the age of thirteen or at thirteen. Uh, how would, how does this homeless youth transitional housing work in that circumstance?
In that circumstance, they're probably trying to definitely maintain that family together and use a a different shelter in a in a different part of the the state. So two-on-one uh would would be contacting others, other uh available shelters to ensure that family could stay intact. Uh, if that one individual uh particular shelter was able to take a youth over thirteen, because many are are you know, taking uh old older youth, youth over thirteen, of course, that because situations like that in a family can occur at any moment. And most importantly is to keeping that family safe and intact and together. So they would be looking for either another type of shelter type setting or um tapping into some resources through the ARPA funds for hoteling of that family. That's often what's what's being done if there's not an available shelter too. And they would do that as a temporary solution until they can find out what were the circumstances that this this family is going through in order to get them rehoused right away. If they're gonna uh, if it's been an eviction, they'd be looking for how and the best way to get the family rehoused and what type of funding would be available to to support um a security deposit and rental for a few months in order for them to get reestablished into into housing again. But they would definitely be looking for another uh shelter type setting or looking to to hotel it just to avoiding that placement of of the of the male being separated from his family, especially if there's not other therapeutic or mental health needs that are present there.
Thank you so much for that explanation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Representative Exum, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. Um, I just have a question around the um what that came to mind when talking about the study. And I'm curious about how it's being structured um so that we make sure that we access folks. When when looking, I think one of the things that's different with all of the work that happened in last session is that we're also pulling in children who are not in DCF care. And they are being offered the opportunity to have services. I'm wondering, though, how the marketing, how those individuals are being reached? Because if you don't have a reason to seek DCF, how would you know that? Um, and that might impact the utilization. So I'm curious about what type of marketing um is taking place to reach other individuals outside of DCF.
Hi, Representative. Hi, everyone. I'm Vinnie Russo. Um, I'm a government relations here at DCF. So in relation to how we're marketing these programs, there's a couple of different things that were that are underway right now. So a couple of sessions ago, we did institute our parent resource guides. And we began sharing them with emergency rooms across the state. We've expanded that in last year's bill to include schools and um police vehicles and EMT vehicles as well. So and those, and just for those who don't know, we, those are posted on our website. We are in the process currently from last year's session of translating them into multiple languages. And those are available for families, and it's divided the local resources regionally uh by service type. So those are all out there now and should be being shared. And and also, yes, it should be being shared both at the emergency rooms and through schools. So we share these with the Boards of Ed, and they're responsible for emailing these links to all the parents in the local um school system. Also, you always have two-on-one. Obviously, that gets promoted quite a bit. We we are part of that system. And so we definitely share in the advertising through the two-on-one system. There was also um, I believe, a half a million dollars allocated last year to Demus and DCF to do a marketing campaign. Those efforts are underway. We have representation along with Demus to begin those efforts. And I think the things are rolling out um as we speak. So those are just some of the ways off the top of my head that um that we're trying to get the word out to families. Obviously, we're also using various types of social media accounts and other things like that. But but in those, immediately, that's those are some of the things we're doing.
And and um, oh.
The then, uh, so I'm being told that the vendor has been chosen for the Demus DCF marketing campaign, so that should be underway shortly.
Okay, thank you. And so knowing that that is still underway, which is is understandable. Um, the study, what is, how does that look? Like, could you provide a bit more information about how it's being structured? Um, because I guess it would need to correlate with having enough time for people to see the marketing to start utilizing the services um in order to get an accurate reflection.
If you're referencing that study, excuse me, the uh uh the statement I mentioned regarding the funds. Uh, we strategically connected those funds to our administrative service organization formerly known as Beacon, now known as Carolon, uh, because they also do the access mental health work. And if you recall, we expanded access mental health as well uh and allowed for uh three sessions of services connected to those families who uh uh use access mental health and uh had psychotropic medication consultation through all of that. So we feel pretty good that their database allows them to capture not just the utilization of uh funds uh from the two different funds that we set up, but an array of of mental health services that traditionally would not have been available to them. Through that database and through the work that they do, they're able to give us quarterly reports uh to show utilization, to show quality, uh, quality impact. And it is those uh uh reports that that are referenced as a study that we look at that at the end of the use of those funds of all of those services, we can make a determination as to whether or not these are having an impact, you know, societal impact to where uh they should be continued and sustained.
Oh, that's that's helpful, um, because I know that um pediatricians are able to get the support that they need in their offices. And I've heard from a good number of them that they are utilizing these uh these resources. Um, so I'll be very interested in seeing how that comes out. So that makes a lot of sense to me. That is through Beacon.
Yeah, I I just wanted, I'm sorry, just wanted to opine a little bit too on the pediatrician piece. We were recently in a forum um in which some of the pediatricians who talked about the use of access mental health in general, in that it builds capacity every time they access it. So they may not have had the information before, but the more they've had to um gotten some additional supports through that, their mental health acuity in terms of, I'm sorry, their mental health competencies in terms of directing their young patients is growing. So I think it builds system capacity as it's used too.
I I absolutely can just say, incidentally, that um my son's pediatrician told me that they are starting to use it though and had nothing to do with me. So I thought that was really interesting and a good sign. And and the last question I have is around the utilization of respite for non-DCF families. Just curious how that's going. I know there's some funding for that. Um, if I could get, just get a little update on that. I think it was eighty-five thousand. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so so our our traditional respite program is available to non-DCF-involved families through all local communities of uh of care. Um, we have about uh anywhere from, depending on uh the jurisdictions, anywhere from eighteen to twenty-something local collaboratives that are mental health collaboratives that have care coordination. They kind of pattern after emergency mobile psych teams and all. And in each of those collaboratives, uh, we fund them with a with a an amount for respite for families who come to them. What we did with the expansion dollars we received was enhanced uh their capacity. Uh, so it gave them the opportunity to serve more families. We um can't quantify yet what that expansion looks like, but hopefully at the end of the fiscal year, we'll be able to know how many more families were served um through the respite program expansion that that we received.
And that's for non-DCF families?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, any family who chooses, they don't have to come through our door to access it. I'll see it that way. So it could be a case open in DCF where a family would like to take advantage of it. They don't need our permission or our referral. We don't gatekeep it. Uh, that's uh strictly the provider in the community who does that.
Okay, and who and who manages that again? I'm sorry, I think I missed that part.
The individual contracts are with different providers throughout the state. Uh, we uh manage it in our children's mental health system uh by way of service utilization and uh performance data that they have to report to us routinely.
And how does someone tap into that again, like if?
Yeah, again, uh, for years, we've had what's known as a local systems of care, which are community collaboratives around mental health. That is, that are run by um advocates in the in each of our communities. Um, they uh usually work with some of our private nonprofit, private nonprofit providers in those communities. Uh, uh, and uh they become like the funding anchor, those nonprofit providers. They are the ones who would get the contracts to do care coordination. Uh, and with their care coordinating contracts, uh, they have dollars to provide families for respite. So families in their communities uh will and should be able to know where to go to get like mental health supports and services through their local collaboratives.
Okay, I may circle back later on this. I don't want to belabor, but I realize um there's a lot, a long way to go here, but thank you so much. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative Exum. I don't see any other hands, so continue on, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, so the next question um asked us to get very specific on the expansion of pediatric mobile um crisis intervention. So that was um emergency mobile psych. The actual service type is under the pediatric to differentiate that from Demus's mobile psych services. And so what you see in this chart um uh represents the utilization since the expansion. So on January first of twenty twenty-three, DCF six mobile crisis intervention providers began responding during the hours of ten PM to six AM um and from ten PM to one PM on Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, so between January first and February twenty-eighth, which is the last um reporting period, we've had a hundred and thirty-nine mobile crisis episodes um during the expanded hours. And Hartford and the central regions seeing the highest episode volume. The southwestern region uh seeing the the least in terms of the expanded hour. So I think there was a question very specifically to how it's how it's going and what has it looked like since we've expanded capacity to be twenty-four hours. There's further detail there that the largest portion of episodes um are between ten PM and one AM um in that uh ten AM and one PM on weekends with the hours between Friday and Saturday afternoon seeing more episodes than during the weekday overnight hours, which makes sense to make sense.
No questions, so continue on, please. Thank you.
Um, I believe the the subsection B here was answered as we were talking more about the um continuation or sustainability of the ARPA-funded projects and that we will be looking towards those um areas that we've articulated to determine whether or not they will be part of future budgets. Question number six is a breakdown of the types of foster care payments that we have and the summary of each. What you'll see in the first block are the different types of foster care that we have. So the first one would be what we call our traditional uh core foster care. The second would be our kin or relative placements. As we've indicated, Connecticut is a state that um largely believes that children should be with their family members if at all possible or someone that they know. And we are about of the children under eight, under the age of eighteen, about fifty percent of our kids are with relatives or kids that they know. We have a four-tiered medically complex foster care system that rates children's acuity in terms of their medical needs from something like a child who may need an asthma plan, kind of being a lower level, to someone who may need um a trach or some really complex medical care um being at a higher tier. And that's our medically complex placements. And then finally, the functional family therapy, or what's formerly known as TFC foster care or therapeutic foster care, is the last level of foster care explained there. We've reprocured that that uh service type after twenty years to really emphasize the therapeutic piece of things. So if you think of the continuum on our um responding to the placement needs of children, if children are not in congregate settings but present with complex behavioral health needs, we believe by supporting the family with a therapeutic intervention supported by a community-based agency, we could achieve the same type of stability for a child in 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 a home setting. Um, so those are the four different types of foster care payments. And then outlined below are the rates associated with each of those. Um, and it's a broke, it's broken down by um age and their rates.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, two quick questions about this. Um, when is the last time these rates were increased? And then do we, well, I would assume, but is there a comparison to other states? Like, how do we rank in terms of our daily rates?
So you have a rate. What's the rate question?
Yeah, so the. Oh, I'm sorry. Just have an audio. An adjustment to be made. We good?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the rates hadn't been adjusted in over, I would say, fifteen, twenty years. Um, the uh, that's the bad news. Uh, we did get um um through uh the federal, federal allocations, we were able to make additional payments or give increases to families through the pandemic uh and added additional supports to them because of the work they did with with children who were no longer in school and all of that. So we're able to give an enhancement through the pandemic. It was short-term uh but effective. Uh, so so the bad news is we haven't had a rate increase uh for quite some time. The good news, though, is that Connecticut still ranks high among most states uh when it comes to the rates we pay our foster parents, particularly uh for children who are placed with relative and kin. Uh, you will see a lot of states have a differential with relative and kin, and that differential is much less relatives uh and kin who are caring for children uh in in our sys- in the system. Uh, we don't make a distinction. Uh, the same support a core family would get, uh, relative and kin get it uh because uh the supports are for the child, not necessarily for uh, you know, the the caregiver. And but it's for take care of those needs. And so a child is in a core home or relative home, the needs are the same.
Great, thank you. And a bizarre question, but I'm like dealing with this in another committee. So just wondering with, and now seeing how it's broken down, with um zero to five, are diapers provided to foster parents for like zero to two?
So 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 when we make an initial placement, which is mostly are placements where people aren't prepared, you know, uh, because of the um just just the dynamics of child protection and how removals occur. Uh, at the time of a placement, foster parents may not have diapers, may not have a crib, uh, may not have the necessary supports for a child, particularly an infant. And so we will upfront a lot of that. Uh, for foster parents, we will give a pack and play. We will give a supply of uh pampers and diapers and formula and things like that. However, um, they are expected, though, to continue to meet the child's needs with the stipend that they get uh with the rates that you see on their own without any additional support from us.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Representative Johnson, followed by Representative Nuccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just to follow up on the type of child, because there are many children, not many, but there are a few children uh who may have some severe behavioral or just overall physical difficulties that that back in the day, they might have been placed in an institutional setting. Uh, how many of those do we have uh in placed in uh other than the the family's home or even in the family's home? What kind of supportive services are we giving those families that have uh children that have really great needs? And I just wondered, I just, how are we addressing that situation? Because uh I I I've had some circumstances here in my district where the, it didn't seem like there was a, this is several years ago, where there was a lot of uh, you know, difficulty with managing the child and the the parent was left pretty much all by herself.
So if the family comes to our attention in terms of the child needing placement, um, so uh because we're kind of talking about the foster care piece of things. So once there have been um exhaustive, what we would hope exhaustive, community efforts to try to sustain or maintain the child in the home, this section kind of speaks to the types of foster care placements that are available for fam- that are available to kids. So the child would be placed in foster care. Um, a child that, as you're describing, that might have some enhanced behavioral health needs. Um, a child that as you're describing that might have some enhanced behavioral health needs. Might be um assessed through our um a regional resource group clinicians who do a standardized assessment of children. To see if they meet the needs of that F F T foster care, which is therapeutic foster care. Um and those needs would be um addressed through clinically in a home setting. About six percent of the children that we have in care, so of the roughly three thousand um some children that we have in care right now. Um, six percent of them are in congregate settings that might need an even higher level than therapeutic foster care. And those are the kids whose needs are met in residential placements right now.
Thank you so much for your answers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Representative Nuccio?
Thank you. Um, so sir, I just want to make sure I understood correctly what you said. So um while the rates have not been updated, we're one of the highest from a rate perspective?
Yes.
Okay, um and what other?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I I can answer. She just looked it up. Twenty-five dollars a day is the national average.
Twenty to twenty.
Twenty to twenty-five is the.
Twenty to twenty-five. Is the national average, okay. And um what other supports are people getting when they get, I know my my brother did this, right? So I know that it also comes along with Husky. It also comes along with WIC. It comes along. So what other supports are we providing to these families beyond just the the dollar payment, you know, the monthly rate here?
So along with this stipend that would um hopefully meet the basic needs of the child while placing care. Yeah, you're right that the Medicaid or Husky, the child would be on um Husky for insurance and all of the entitlements that come with that. Um, additional supports that we would provide foster parents typically would be through our foster care support division. So along with the child social worker, there's a foster care support person that would um work regularly through um not only the the agency. But also our um Connecticut Association of Foster and Adoptive Parents who have liaisons in every single office. Who check in with our foster parents and foster parents know they can use their K F F liaison if there is a need that a child has in their home. That can't, that's not being met by either the child social worker or the foster care support staff that we have. Um, and so we we believe that the needs of our children in care, there's several mechanisms to be able to support the foster payment, foster parent during those placements.
Thank you. And then al- also for school-aged children. Um, are they then also getting like the free and reduced lunch at school and any support services there?
Most times, yes. And also our kinship care providers get an additional additional level of support um because of the unique needs of kin placements.
Okay, and how about like uh if there's daycare needs, like care for kids or anything like that?
We're happy to report that we have been in a a project with Office of Early Childhood to really streamline that process for the providers of care for kids. Um, because what we heard for several years and members of the committee will will know because they've gotten calls from providers. That just weren't happy with the way that we were administering care for kids. Um, so we've been working with our partners at O E C to um have the childcare of children and foster care go through that system. To be a lot less clunky. Um, and so that is um under implementation right now. And we believe that that will also offer some additional supports. Um, even though they got care for kids while they were with DCF, the process of securing that was not as seamless as it is in O E C. Just because of some technical back of the room um processes.
So it sounds like we're doing a lot, right? We're doing a lot to make sure these kids are being taken care of and that. And these rates are um are are still very fair considering what the rest of rest of the country and such is paying. So, all right, that's that's all. I wanted to just make sure I understood it fully. So um if it comes up again, I I have the background. Thank you very much.
And I, you know, in one of those jurisdictions that I spoke with last week who called us and were asking us about um our relative um process. Uh, they shared with me that they pay half the rate of a core home. And I said, I don't, does the child have half the needs? So that's to give you an example of what some other jurisdictions are kind of faced with when they think about relative care.
I'm glad that we're not one of them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. I don't see any other questions, so please feel free to move forward.
Okay, so um the next question um asked us specifically about foster family subsidies. Um, and I think it just based on our responses to the questions, I believe we've, did we answer that sufficiently to the committee? Are there any additional questions about the subsidies? That was the subpart to that question. I'm sorry, as the screen scrolled up, I wanted to make sure we covered that part.
Yeah, that was a very comprehensive chart. Thank you.
Okay, question number seven asked about um placement disruption. So what we've offered to you is what we present to the federal government that track what on in the child welfare jargon as placement stability. And so what you see is the outline from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two, the placement stability rates in Connecticut. Um, uh, DCF is required to report this data to the Federal Administration for Children and Families um through our C F S R. Um, so permanency outcome number one requires that children have a permanence, per have permanency and stability in their living situations. And this indicator measures whether children who are removed from their homes experience stability in their placements while the setting, while they're in foster care. The measurement is the rate of placement moves per one thousand days in foster care of all the children who enter care for a twelve-month period. So the federal national average of placement stability is four point four or almost four and a half. Um, and on question number seven, it breaks down the great placement stability um rate data for here in Connecticut. At a current point in time, which was last week, our average number of placements for children currently in care is about two point six. And there's a footnote there, um as we were talking earlier about the acuity of children who are in care or the complex needs of families who still remain. Um, whose children still remain in DCF care. It's likely that our placement stability is a reflection of that because if a child has um more complex needs. There's likely a disruption that occurs in their placement.
Great, thank you. Representative Walker?
Thank you. Um, so I'm I'm trying to understand the the um, thank you for the information. I'm trying to understand, so you say the measurement is the rate of placement moves per one thousand days of foster care. So in order to get a four point one in uh in in this in this methodology that they have. How many times? That means that the child has moved four days? Has moved four days?
Four times, four times within that thousand days. Mm hmm.
Okay, all right, so, okay.
So four different placements.
Yes.
That's a, that's a lot.
That's a lot. And so the point in time that um you see under um as of March or last week, the average number of placements is two, two and a half.
Right, okay. So and it it when we hear the the testimony of the kids and we we talk to them, you know, and they talk about having six and seven.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not unusual.
No, and it's here like that to me is one of those areas that we have, we have focused attention on and we will continue to lean in on. Because, you know, you often hear Michael say that if a child has to be placed, their first placement needs to be their last. And so, you know, some of the placements represent um a placement from a core home to a relative. And so why wasn't that relative assessed sooner? So if a child has to be removed, we could go straight to a relative versus the pit stop in a core home. Um, you know, you especially, you know, one of the things that you've just referenced. Um, and we just held a conference for the leadership in DCF about a hundred and seventy-five leaders. Was our transitioning um age youth, which are kids that are older youth in care. And one of the things that they will say, and that's what you likely will hear from our teenagers, is that kind of movement from place to place. Then, you know, if we can do things that better understand the needs of our older youth in care, that's reflective of placement stability. I think that um we are well well positioned as a state to continue to make improvements in this area.
Do you have like a range? I mean, I I know this is the average.
Yeah.
Range like um.
Uh, yeah, I'm sure we, yeah, I can get that. The the range of placements for kids. So this is the average. But do we have a range of, you know, the number of of days that children and the 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 most and the least? Um, I do think too that the as we think about the reduced number of kids in congregate settings. The kids that are there longer or the kids that are in our placements longer, whether they're in a foster home or in a congregate setting. Tend to be there longer because of the complex nature of the children who are in care. Um, because of our attention to kind of keeping families to get safely together. Um, so I I will ask Michael to elaborate a little bit more on that to give you a a clearer picture. One second, let me.
Y- yeah, I mean, that, I'm sorry, there are several factors that impact that number to make it look the way it looks. And that's why it's important to get underneath it. One is that when we shrink the number of children in foster care, just by the fact that the numbers go down. Uh, what is it? The numerator goes down, the denominator goes up. So sometimes it's just simple math and it's not that something has occurred to create an increase. It's just that when you, when we went from uh went to a thirty, roughly around thirty percent reduction of kids in foster care. A lot of the kids that were removed from the equation were kids who had less movements in care. And so the kids who were left were the kids who had been in care longer. And by virtue of the fact they've been in care longer, they had more moves as well. And so it uh it 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 made that number look that way. And then secondly, another factor is that uh with what age children were when they came into foster care. And so when we look at that age bracket that there, we have a cohort of kids who come in from zero to six, from seven to twelve. And then it's the thirteen to eighteen, thirteen to seventeen-year-olds who come in. And usually when they come in, uh, those are coming in from either the mental health system or from the juvenile justice system. Right into foster care and their first placement is one that usually is not stable. Um, because it may be one in a hospital, it may be immediately into a group home because of, you know, the emergent nature of their entry into care. That there's no knowledge of who they are and finding a foster home could be tough for them. And so they may have two or three movements in the first two weeks of entry into care. Just by the fact that no one really know know them well enough to make a solid placement decision. And so that's the thirteen, the seventeen-year-old cohort uh would be helpful to look at separately. To see what their placement moves look like compared to a zero to six-year-old infant could come into care. And we know that child probably won't move, but maybe but one time, that is to a foster home and then back to her to reunification. Or to a foster home and be adopted.
That's what, that's what I was kind of, I was thinking when when I was talking about the range because the other, the other part of that, I mean. Four times in a thousand days, that's every two hundred and fifty days. And, you know, that's. I I I don't know, I just um that that type of instability is, and I I know the national average, but we're comparing to. I won't talk about the states, but there are states out there that don't have, have have the um, the expectations that I think we have here. So, thank you. Um, I I got it. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Representative. Um, I I would add on to what Representative Walker requested in terms of the range. There also a way to get the breakdown maybe of how many kids are above the federal national average here in Connecticut?
Yeah, we can certainly get that.
It'd be interesting. Okay. Thank you. This is really helpful.
Mm hmm.
I don't see any other questions, so you can go forward.
Okay, thank you. So the next question, if um we have a different driver, you can scroll it. Yeah, not too good. Yeah, thank you. Um, average length of stay in congregate placements and how that's changed over the years. And so I, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this too. And I would also caveat this with um an emphasis on what uh Deputy Commissioner Williams just said. In terms of the um shrinking of our congregate population over the last ten years. Um, is reflective in the increase in how long kids stay when they are in congregate settings. Because um of the needs of kids that we still do have in care. So when the overall N of children we have in care shrinks. Um, we've been able to still maintain um a relatively small percentage of children who are in congregate or non-family settings. But you will see that their length of stay is longer because of their needs. So the chair, the chart breaks down residential treatment centers and therapeutic group homes and the length of time children actually spend there. If you look from the bottom up um of since since uh uh twenty eighteen. The other question, uh, the sub-question to that had to do with the benefit of shortened lengths of stay in congregate settings. As Rep. Walker referenced, what we hear from older youth in care, that group home settings have um um a a negative impact on their ability to transition into into family life. Or into societies beyond that. So congregate care settings should be utilized for short-term treatment with the focus on family engagement and inclusion of the child. That work on the issues that brought them into care as soon as possible. Overall, research indicates that children who experience long-term congregate or group pain, group, group care. Have higher re-entry rates of exiting to reunification than other types of out-of-home settings. Are two and a half times more likely than their peers to become delinquent or have delinquent behaviors, have poor educational outcomes. Are at less likely to graduate high school compared to youth in family foster care. Are at risk of physical abuse when they are placed in group group settings, are less likely to achieve permanency than those in non-relative homes. And lack opportunities to develop critical life skills and positive relationships. And that the experience in group or institutional placements is punitive and traumatic. I want to emphasize here that the congregate placements that we have in Connecticut are very caring of the children that they have. And we work in conjunction with them um really well. Um, but long-term stays and therapeutic, or I'm sorry, long-term stays in residential care is um not what we want to be represented here in Connecticut.
No questions. Continue on, please.
Question number nine has an attachment that um has a bit of an explanation to go along with it. And the question had to do with our ability to measure quali- quality assurance across our fourteen area offices. What are our current quality assurance protocols? And how these, how did these protocols change following the death of infants and toddlers um from fentanyl? And um fatalities and near fatalities as reflected in Baby Dylan and Baby B's cases. Um, so there is an attachment um uh that speaks in depth to this particular question. My team is pulling it up right now.
Which attachment is it? Commissioner?
It would be attachment to question number nine.
Attachment, it says attachment, because there are a lot of cases here, there are a lot.
I know, we want it to be thorough. Uh, let's one second. It should be loading right now. So what you see in front of you is the attachment to question nine, which is the department's um C Q I and quality assurance um processes. So um the first area of quality assurance um is our administrative case reviews. And you would recognize that term as A C Rs. And they are ongoing periodic reviews completed to assess the case plan and case goals of every child in DCF care. Um, every child in DCF care includes a summary of their medical, behavioral, mental health status. Um, and these are reviewed with it, this is developed within sixty days of their entry into care and reviewed every six months. The A C R process includes, also includes reviews of family cases in which children remain at home. And those risk factors are continually assessed. The A C R data aggregated and is available under the Case Practice Data Report. And that last year, there were nine thousand one hundred and thirty-seven administrative case reviews completed. The next review that DCF does in a quality assurance is our differential response reviews. And that um allows for DCF to regularly assess um cases in which uh we utilize a standardized tool to examine our practice. Of both intake and family assessment response cases. The D R S data is aggregated and shared monthly by the Q A staff to the individual office directors. And last year, nine hundred and forty-two cases were polled and reviewed. We also have a wa- a way to measure the cases or the reports not accepted by our care line. Ongoing periodic reviews are completed to ensure that DCF Caroline is appropriately screening in or screening out reports. That meet a suspected, a threshold of suspected abuse or neglect. Our uh reviews for two thousand one, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two were aggregated and the results, results were shared. With the CPS staff and their leadership and Caroline. Um, and in twenty twenty-one, a total of thirty-five hundred non-accepted reports were screened. And in twenty twenty-two, there's an additional nine hundred and fifty non. And in twenty twenty-two, there's an additional nine hundred and fifty non-accepted reports, um, reviewed. I will tell you, um, just anecdotally, uh, the review of those non-accepted re- re- um, revealed overwhelmingly that the decisions that the screeners were making were correct, associated with the screening tool that's used to assess, uh, reports that come in and are, uh, non-accepted. Another area of, um, C Q I and QA, uh, are the C F S R, which is the report that, um, I'm sorry, is the evaluation of every child welfare jurisdiction across the country that happens that has an associated program improvement plan. Every single one of the C F S R reviews have a program improvement plan. Connecticut completed their PIP early and, uh, early and successfully. A comprehensive review shows that, um, is, is then shared with our CPS leadership to be able to lean into where there are, um, practice enhancements that need to be made. So there were sixty-four C F S R or PIP reviews that were completed in twenty twenty-two. We also conduct critical incident summary reviews on, um, which is a standardized summary for specific cases. The criteria of these particular reviews is when there is a family that has active involvement with the department or has had recent involvement with the department um, within the last twelve months. The quality, quality improvement tool that is used, um, includes a brief case summary and an assessment of case practice. These critical incident summary reviews are separate from the special qualitative reviews that we can ta- that I'll talk about in a, another section. So last year, thirty-seven reviews were completed.
Tell us which ones are self-report and which ones are external report. So, um, meaning are you monitoring yourself and making these evaluations? Or is, are the federal government or are agencies making these reviews? So, um, like the administrative, is that a self-report?
Yes, we, yes, we have administrative review. So the only one of these that are external to the department is the C F S R. Those are the federal reviews. We're about to undergo, um, the next round of Child and Family Service reviews. If you recall, when we, um, do those assessments that the federal government sends in people to do those reviews, but the rest are a part of our internal quality assurance, uh, framework. Um, along with our, I'm sorry, Rep. Walker, is that the, are you good with that? Okay. Um, along with our critical incident reviews, we have sibling visitation reviews. One of the concerns, um, in the past was whether or not if children were placed into care and they were not placed with their siblings. We, um, wanted to ensure that we were taking a periodic look to ensure that those children were having contact with each other. And so in twenty twenty-two, tw- two hundred and eighty-six sibling visitation reviews were conducted. There are also in-home case reviews, which is a standardized tool that is a comprehensive review of practice of our in-home cases. So these are situations in which children have not come to, come into care, but the family has been referred to the department and we are, um, managing and assessing the, the current risk to the child safety using our A B C D child safety practice model. Um, and a pilot of our reviews was, uh, conducted, excuse me, early this year. And, uh, we will resume in-home cases and in, in-home case reviews in April to establish a regular cadence of case practice, um, within the Strategic Planning Unit. We have, um, safety plan and family arrangements, family arrangement reviews that are conducted, uh, within the department. And we go on to um, explain how often those are conducted and who is a part of those teams. Um, it's a multidisciplinary team that conducts these particular reviews, uh, in conjunction with the department's child safety practice model. Um, and the meetings are facilitated by our Academy for Workforce Development. In October of twenty twenty-two, a protocol was implemented specifically to cases involving, um, parents of children that, uh, we suspect or know that fentanyl is used. Um, what you know, what many of you on the committee have heard is that there is a national epidemic with regards to fentanyl exposure in children. And so last fall, we enhanced our criteria when there is, uh, a concern or a suspected or known use of fentanyl in the household, which requires our staff within twenty-four hours of receiving that particular case to conduct a multidisciplinary assessment. Um, and those are continuing. Um, um, there's also ad hoc, um, reports that are conducted by our strategic planning, um, cohort reviews where they look at specific cohorts like our older youth in care or transitioning between DCF, DDS and Demus. Um, we also take a look at um, whether or not any of these, uh, aspects of quality assurance, um, need to be, all of them are disaggregated by race and age based on, uh, what's going on in that particular child or family's care. Uh, we also have implemented a child stat process, um, that was launched in April of twenty twenty-one. If you recall, I've um, reported back then that we were looking at the child stat quality assurance process in New York, New York City. And, um, I believe it was Michigan, um, at the time to model after. And we have had four cycles of the child stat process, which allows for our specific area offices to look across themselves. So across our fourteen area offices, using the same metrics to look at what areas of practice that particular office director needs to lean in more, um, specific to their office. One of the questions that was always asked of DCF is how do you know what happens in Torrington isn't different than what happens in Bridgeport? And the child stat process allows for each um, super region, so the two DCF regions, to look across their four or five area offices comparing that data and then for the department to be able to use that data across, um, all fourteen to make some informed decisions about strategies, uh, to enhance our practice. Another area of quality assurance is our special qualitative reviews, which are, um, a more in-depth look at specific cases involving a child fatality or a near miss, or if I deem that I've seen a theme of particular types of cases that I want a special qualitative review done on, those are uh, conducted by our Academy for Workforce, uh, Development in conjunction with our Strategic Planning Bureau to take a, a, a deeper dive into those cases that have, uh, real specific, um, issues that are involved in those cases. Um, the, uh, above our examples are continuous quality improvement practices to ensure a thorough and systemic communication through the department, um, to make sure that we are not only a learning organization, but understand how we make our decisions on a day-to-day basis and that our department leaders know, um, specifically what's under their purview and where they can lean in on areas that might need some additional supports.
Great, thank you. I don't see questions on that, so please feel free to continue.
Thank you. So the next question, um, asked specifically about our consolidation of DCF area offices. Um, in the governor's budget, it spoke specifically to Middletown Office consolidating with the Meriden Office and what impact to the children and families in the Middletown area that would have. Um, and they, we were asked to provide an analysis that led to that consolidation. So DCF began evaluating the area office proximity and geographic service areas. And we overlaid that with which offices are currently operating on a month-to-month lease um, with no release penalties. This narrowed the pool of available consolidated offices significantly. So geographically and which offices were on a month-to-month lease. From this pool, DCF evaluated the size of our area offices, geographic scope, their staff and their client base to settle on leveraging the Ma- Meriden Area Office Building to also house our Middletown Area Office staff. Uh, DCF mindfully establishes this case practice to meet the needs of families where they are mainly in community settings and their homes and to attempt to ensure that children are kept in their natural community environments whenever possible. The components of a DCF case require in-office presence that have traditionally been supervised visitation, considered removal, administrative case reviews, and with the implementation of the Quality Parenting Center that we talked about earlier, DCF is moving away from supervised visits in its area offices and opting for more home-like, community-based settings that are more normative in nature. Um, similarly, the increase in engagement of parents and kin, um, through considered removals and ACR, DCF has, um, moved to offering virtual considered removals and ACRs, which have yielded much more and greater participation. The efforts have significantly reduced the footprint of kids and families who physically come to our area offices. The distance between Middletown and Meriden is eleven miles, which is about an eighteen-minute travel time. DCF has successfully worked with other state and local agencies to negotiate an added bus stop at the Meriden Area Office, ensuring that Middletown and Meriden bus lines travel to the Meriden, Meriden Office location. Also, the addition of DCF centralized transportation unit that, um, this body had actually supported um, is easily available to any family in need of attending an onsite meeting in Meriden if necessary. Finally, the promulgation of state employees', um, uh, telework opportunities. DCF staff travel to their in-person and in-person, in-home, community-based visits with children and families primarily from, um, wherever they log in, which is at home in most cases, which allows for increased mobility in the community to get to where they need to go.
I do see a question. Senator Lesser, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, did, uh, DCF recommend closing the Middletown Office?
Good morning, Senator. We actually looked at, um, several of our offices to determine based on the geography, the, um, um, ones that were under the month-to-month lease, uh, to determine which we would be able to offer as part of our consolidation efforts. And this was the, um, area office, these two were the area offices that looked um, closest to being able to do that with less of an impact. Is that fair, team?
It, and so that recommendation was from DCF?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hand, so please continue on.
Oops, sorry about that. Um, of the three hundred and twenty-four full-time position vacancies, also the question number eleven was, um, asking us to break down more of the vacancies related to our, um, facilities, so specifically Solnet South and Solnet North. And so the agency broke, broke is, agency vacancies in those locations are broken down by part-time and full-time. You see in that first chart. And then, um, these figures include the forty additional positions recently approved to address staffing concerns at the Solnet Hospital and are in addition to the three hundred and twenty-four vacancies that were previously identified. So the Solnet Hospital and PRTF vacancies are broken down below in that second chart, the hospital vacancies, the, uh, Solnet North, which is our boys, PRTF, and Solnet South is the girls, um, the number of nursing vacancies, the number of part-time vacancies, and then the total number of full-time vacancies are outlined here.
Senator Lesser?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you give us an update on your strategy to fill those vacancies if you have additional of support for, um, you know, hiring bonuses, or if you have marketing funds, or what you, you need to actually fill those vacancies because it's, it's been persistent for
Yes.
a very long time and want to know what we can do to close that gap.
Thank you very much for that question. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the question. We also have our, um, human resources business partner from the Department of Administrative Services on the, um, Jenna Fusco is the Human Resource Business Partner associated with DCF specifically. Jenna, if you're on, can you, um, speak specifically to the efforts that, um, DAS is working in conjunction with DCF in addressing the Solnet vacancies?
Good morning. I sure can. I am Jenna Fusco, Human Resources Business Partner for DCF. I, I hope everyone's doing well this morning. So, um, we do have many efforts underway to fill these vacancies at, uh, Solnet South Hospital as well as Solnet North and Solnet South PRTF. I'm going to start, um, by speaking about the hospital vacancies that we have. Um, currently, we have twenty-four vacancies that are specific to the LPN job classification. And, um, previously, we were operating on an RN um, model and we recently switched to the LPN model. Um, because we do, um, have a larger pool of LPNs within the state of Connecticut. As we recognize through our, um, posting process, that many of the candidates who apply are LPN and they have not been able to join, um, the Solnets because we did not have the, um, the proper positions for them. So we have opened these positions. We do have, um, one certified list that closed a few weeks ago and tomorrow and Friday, we are interviewing thirty-two LPN candidates. Um, we are doing this as, um, two large hiring events. We have the Solnet Clinical Leadership, um, leading the charge. They will be holding the interviews and then HR will be present. We have five HR employees that will be onsite tomorrow as well as Friday to speak with the candidates, um, that receive a letter of interest. So they will receive a letter that is letting them know that they are a recommended candidate. It will stand for basically a contingent offer. We will provide them our state benefits, answer any questions that they have. And within two business days, send them a formal contingent offer letter and begin to get them through the onboarding process. So that is what we have underway this week for our LPN positions. We currently also have, um, RN positions posted as well as head nurse positions. We just refreshed our postings for the, um, head nurses. Um, and so that way we could add, um, some, you know, more attractive language and just, you know, get a fresh post out there, get some new candidates through. Um, we do have, um, I'm just checking the number on that. There will be one moment. We do have nineteen head nurse vacancies and ten, um, RN nurse vacancies. Um, as I mentioned, we did refresh a posting that will close tomorrow, the fourteenth, uh, for the head nurses. And we do have a continuous posting that we're working through right now for our, our RN nurses. We prioritize new qualified candidates daily. We interview weekly. In addition, oh, uh, yes, please go ahead.
Well, I was gonna ask, first off, if the switch to the LPN model has reduced the level of care that you're able to offer at Solnet?
So far, we have hired a few LPNs forward. Um, we have not hired enough to see the impact quite yet. This is our, um, large event that we're holding for the first time to bring uh, LPNs onboard. So, no, we haven't really seen the impact to that yet, but we're very excited about that.
Senator Lesser, can I, um, add to that question? Because I, I appreciate the concern that changing from RNs to LPNs would, um, either decrease or diminish the, um, competencies. And, and, you know, I use that word in, in quotes. Our new superintendent, um, that we have at the Solnet campus for our hospital is, um, professionally an immersed, a nurse administrator. Um, in conjunction with her, we also have, um, the department's pediatrician, Dr. Nicole Taylor, who has been working hand-in-hand. And it was their recommendation that some of the, um, tasks and shifts associated with our nursing vacancies could safely be, um, uh, executed by LPN. So it was at their recommendation. So we did not do this from a purely, um, HR standpoint, but it was at the recommendation of the leadership that is steeped in this particular area of practice.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, um, do you, when do you anticipate being able to reopen the, the STAR program? Sorry, the, the, sorry, the, the closed, the closed units that's on there.
So all of the strategies that we were, we've been working with DAS, the LPNs, the job fairs, the, all of the things that Jenna just listed will give us a better timeframe. I, I, I had hoped when you all visited last summer that we would have these, um, beds reopened by the fall. When that didn't occur, um, we worked feverishly through the fall. And now these additional strategies have been recently implemented by a short-term working group in conjunction with DAS to recognize that there needed to be some additional, um, uh, beyond just those additional, that additional attention to recruitment. Um, one of the things that was very attractive to nurses is the flexibility of the scheduling. And because of the vacancies that we have right now, we can't employ that. But we're confident that when those LPNs can, can, can be added to the full mix, that we'll be able to, um, increase the ability to offer the flexibility of the, the scheduling for the nurses there that will give us a little, but we can't do that yet until those vacancies, um, come onboard.
Got a chicken and egg situation.
It is. It absolutely is.
So I, I, I know you will support the governor's budget, uh, till the last dog dies, but if we were to give you additional, uh, tools to, uh, address that persistent hiring issue, what would be most helpful? Would, you know, would, uh, you know, a, a sign-on bonus would, and what would, what would be a tool currently have at your disposal, marketing or something along those lines?
So, so Senator, I can, um, share with you the short, medium impact and, um, they, they were actually categorized, the strategies that this working group came up with, which, which would have the most immediate impact, which would have the most long-term impact and which would have the least amount of impact. And some of the strategies that you're asking for were actually flushed out by this working group that I can, um, send you what their recommendations are to give you a fuller picture of, you know, the things that we think would, um, allow. That I can um send you what their recommendations are to give you a fuller picture of, you know, the things that we think would um allow for the beds to open up more quickly.
Great, thank you so much. That would be very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
You could send it to the full uh, the full subcommittee, uh that would be great.
Oh, sir, oh, yeah, certainly. Yeah, for sure.
Perfect, thank you.
So we're at um five minutes left in our time. How many more questions are there? And then if Madam Administrator's on, is this our final working group?
This is your final, you have one working group meeting left, but that is with the Department of Social Services. You've called them back.
Got it, but not with D C F, okay.
Not with D C F.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, um uh we have about twenty questions that we were requested to respond to. So it looks like we are just at that halfway point.
Did that include my questions also, Commissioner?
Yes.
We haven't gotten any of those yet either.
Many of those are incorporated, but then there are some enhancements or specifically uh detailed answers to those as well, I'm hearing.
So I know everyone.
So, so Madam Chair?
Yes.
You, you do have two hours set aside on the twentieth. Um I don't know if you feel you need the full two hours with D S S? Or if we could do an hour with D S S and an hour with D C F? You and, and, and Senator Lesser?
I'm, I will weigh in if I may. I, I think we need at least two hours additional with the, with D S S. Um I'll defer to others about what we need with D C F. But I, I don't, I don't think we can go down for the two hours.
Okay.
And.
I can try and find another block of time with D S S. We're running, we're running out of time.
Are members of the committee still available that my team can stay on, but I don't know what your schedule looks like right now?
Unfortunately can't. So um yes, Madam Administrator, can you try and see if we can find, what do folks think, an hour or one hour? I'm seeing, and it, we can find one hour of time.
All right, I'll work on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, with three minutes, you want to go through this, the next one?
But I, I can also offer that um we have provided written responses to all of these. Um so if the committee's pleasure is to kind of look at the written responses. And if there are things that you want further elaboration on, we can certainly have those prepared. If that might make this process a bit more pars- parsimonious. Because I want to make sure that we thoroughly, wanted to make sure that we thoroughly answered all of the committee's questions. And so it, it's in written form already.
Great, thank you. We could, yeah, we can let folks know to review it in preparation for our final hour.
Madam Chair, can I ask one quick question?
Yes, please.
And if D C F, do you? Is eighteen your cutoff point for every agency for services for kids, can you say? Or if, or some agencies more than eighteen?
I'm sorry, can you say one more time what that question was?
Responsibility uh for their care or their services, mental health or any of them? Is eighteen your cutoff point with, with everybody or are there any that go beyond eighteen?
Oh, no, we have um about three hundred and sixty children above the age of eighteen that are receiving services post-majority. Um that have volunteered just because that, you know, at eighteen, if they are committed to us, they can voluntarily sign on to us beyond eighteen. The behavioral health population obviously is all kids in Connecticut. And that goes to eighteen with the transition to D M S at that time on the behavioral health side of things. But on the child protection side, we go to eighteen, they can stay on. And we have about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty um older than care.
With D D S, what is your cutoff point with D D S?
D D S is a little bit different. And so um at eighteen, we've been working very closely with the Department of Developmental Services to transition kids between D C F and D D S. To start to identify who those kids are, but the funding structure is very different um with D C F and with D D S. And so there is a um, a bit of a, a longer answer for that.
Okay, I'll get it at the next hour.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate your time and your responses. They are thorough. We appreciate that. Um and like I said, we'll let our subcommittee members know to review this before we have our final hour. And thank you, Madam Administrator, for finding that final hour.
Thank you to the subcommittee chairs of Rep. Gil, Creston, Senator Lesser, as well as all of the leadership of appropriations. And to the full committee for your thoughtful questions during our presentation and during this work session. And D C F stands um ready to respond in detail to anything that um would help understand what the budget is that the governor has put forward.